Senator, are you speaker, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. When we rose from the committee of the whole following the Chief Justice, Robert Torres' speech, we rose and so I believe we're in the second reading file.
Yes, and I understand, so, Senate, okay, so Senator Ada then.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, we were last on Bill 268-33. And some of my colleagues had some concerns that we already had answered. And I'd like to motion that we move Bill 268-33 down to the voting file.
So, those who have the questions, you've already discussed it with the senators, who had some questions. Okay, so on Bill 268 then, on the motion to send to the voting file, no objections, so ordered. Senator Respecher, you recognize for a motion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that notwithstanding the House rules, we revert back to motions.
Okay, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my first motion is that, given that we do have a committee report from Senator Michael Sinikles's committee regarding the appointment of Christine Beletto to serve as the Director of Department Administration, I move that this be placed in the legislative concurrence file.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
And I also have another motion that the request of the sponsor of Bill 2, the hybrid bill, to bring that bill from the voting file to the second reading file for purposes of adding Senator Sinikles as the second co-sponsor to that bill. So just one amendment.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
So under legislative concurrences, I move that on the nomination of Christine Beletto to serve as the Director of Administration, with Senator Sinikles's committee's recommendation to do confirm, I move that be placed in the voting file.
No objections, so ordered.
And on the second reading file, I'll do this on behalf of Vice Speaker Cruz, I move the Bill 2 as amended and further amended in the committee of the whole, that it be placed in the voting file with...
With that, yes, with that amendment.
And so on that motion, Madam Speaker, I move that Senator Sinikles be added as the second co-sponsor to that bill.
On that amendment, no objections, so ordered.
And now the motion to place in the voting file.
And the motion then to place, to Bill 2, to back to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. We're going to take a brief recess. ... back in session. We are in the voting file. Two other bills will come out as soon as copies are made, so we will proceed with the set that you have on your desk. So we start with Bill Number 161-33 COR. The clerks can read the title, please.
Bill Number 161-33 COR, as substituted on the floor, introduced by Brand T. McCready. An act to amend section 1026 of chapter 10, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated Relative to Establishing the Guam Liberation Day Fishing and Sporting Events.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas.
One second, make sure the mic is... Hmm? You want to use mine? One moment. Her mic's not working apparently, so we're working on that. Please pardon the technical difficulty, so we're going to take a brief recess. Okay, so we're going to start all over, so I'm going to ask the clerks again if you can please read the bill number, Bill 161-33. Read the bill, please, the title of the bill.
Bill Number 161-33 COR, as substituted on the floor, introduced by Brand T. McCready. An act to amend section 1026 of chapter 10, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated Relative to Establishing the Guam Liberation Day Fishing and Sporting Events.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldón. Senator Espaldón, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecher. Senator Respecher, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinikles. Senator Sinikles, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wanta.
Again.
Speaker Wanta, aye.
Senator Sinikles. Senator Sinikles, pass. Senator Sinikles. Senator Sinikles, nay. Bill Number 161-33 received 14 ye votes and one nay. Bill Number 161-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 263-33 LS.
Bill Number 263-33.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye.
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Raspecho.
Yes.
Senator Raspecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number two eighty-four dash thirty-three received fifteen ye votes. Bill number two eighty-seven dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number two ninety dash thirty-three C O R.
Bill number two ninety dash thirty-three C O R, as amended on the floor, introduced by R J Raspecho, Mary Camacho Torres, T C Ada, Frank F Blas Junior. An act to establish the Southern River Erosion Council and to amend section six eight six zero one of article six of chapter sixty-eight, title twenty-one, Guam Code annotated, to mandate the creation of multi-year master plans to address the southern erosion issues related to rivers in southern Guam.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas.
Aye.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Raspecho.
Yes.
Senator Raspecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number two eighty-seven dash thirty-three received fifteen ye votes. Bill number two eighty-seven dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number two ninety dash thirty-three C O R.
Bill number two ninety dash thirty-three C O R, as amended by the sponsor and further amended on the floor, introduced by T C Ada, Judith T Wampat E D D, R J Raspecho. An act to place a portion of tract three six two zero formerly lot three eight one dash two, municipality of Inarahan, under the administrative jurisdiction of the office of the mayor of Inarahan and the Inarahan Municipal Planning Council.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas.
Aye.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye.
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye.
Aye.
Senator Raspecho.
Yes.
Senator Raspecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number two eighty-four dash thirty-three received fifteen ye votes. Bill number two eighty-four dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number two eighty-seven dash thirty-three C O R.
Bill number two eight seven dash thirty-three C O R, as amended on the floor, introduced by R J Raspecho, Mary Camacho Torres, T C Ada, Frank F Blas Junior. An act to establish the Southern River Erosion Council and to amend section six eight six zero one of article six of chapter sixty-eight, title twenty-one, Guam Code annotated, to mandate the creation of multi-year master plans to address the southern erosion issues related to rivers in southern Guam.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas.
Aye.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye.
Aye.
Senator Raspecho.
Yes.
Senator Raspecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number two eighty-seven dash thirty-three received fifteen ye votes. Bill number two eighty-seven dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number two ninety dash thirty-three C O R.
Bill number two ninety dash thirty-three C O R, as amended by the sponsor and further amended on the floor, introduced by T C Ada, Judith T Wampat E D D, R J Raspecho. An act to place a portion of tract three six two zero formerly lot three eight one dash two, municipality of Inarahan, under the administrative jurisdiction of the office of the mayor of Inarahan and the Inarahan Municipal Planning Council.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas.
Aye.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye. Senator Raspecho.
Yes.
Senator Raspecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number two ninety dash thirty-three received fifteen ye votes. Bill number two ninety dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number two eighty-nine dash thirty-three L S.
Bill number two eight nine dash thirty-three L S, as amended by the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and Youth Development, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Judith T Wampat E D D, Dennis G Rodriguez Junior, T R Munia Barnes, N B Underwood P H D, Mary Camacho Torres, R J Raspecho, T C Ada, Tommy Morrison, V Anthony Ada, B J F Cruz, Frank F Blas Junior, Brand T McCready, James V Espaldon, Frank B Ugin Junior, Michael F Q Sinicalis. An act to amend subsection V of section eight zero one zero nine of chapter eighty, title ten, Guam Code annotated, relative to authorizing Imega Lahin Guahan to enter into a line of credit, a direct loan, or alternative financing for the renovation of the Guam Memorial Hospital Labor and Delivery Ward, G M H A Maternal and Child Healthcare, M C H renovation project.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas.
Aye.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Raspecho.
Aye.
Senator Raspecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number two eighty-nine dash thirty-three received fifteen ye votes. Bill number two eighty-nine dash thirty-three is duly passed by this legislature. And all the mothers and babies, thank you. Bill number two ninety-four dash thirty-three C O R.
Bill number two nine four dash thirty-three C O R, as amended on the floor, introduced by B J F Cruz, R J Raspecho, Mary Camacho Torres. An act to add a new subsection five to section one E E of chapter five of public law thirty-three dash sixty-six, relative to providing supplemental funding and authorization to the Guam Election Commission for its F Y twenty sixteen operations and for payments on obligations incurred in the prior years.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas.
Aye.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Raspecho.
Yes.
Senator Raspecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number two ninety-four dash thirty-three received fifteen ye votes. Bill number two ninety-four dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number two ninety-five dash thirty-three C O R.
Bill number two nine five dash thirty-three C O R, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication, introduced by B J F Cruz, N B Underwood P H D. An act to add a new section eighteen to part one of chapter two of public law thirty-three dash sixty-six, relative to appropriating and depositing F Y twenty sixteen territorial educational facilities fund revenues collected in excess of twenty-nine million two hundred fifty-five thousand seven hundred ten dollars to the Guam Department of Education Operations Fund bank account for F Y twenty sixteen G D O E operations.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas.
Aye.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Raspecho.
Yes.
Senator Raspecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number two ninety-five dash thirty-three received fifteen ye votes. Bill number two ninety-five dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Resolution number three oh two dash thirty-three.
Resolution number three oh two dash thirty-three C O R, as amended by the sponsor and further amended on the floor, introduced by Frank F Blas Junior, V Anthony Ada, T C Ada, Frank B Ugin Junior, B J F Cruz, James V Espaldon, Brand T McCready, Tommy Morrison, T R Munia Barnes, R J Raspecho, Dennis G Rodriguez Junior, Michael F Q Sinicalis, Mary Camacho Torres, N B Underwood P H D, Judith T Wampat E D D. Relative to encouraging the United States Congress to introduce and adopt legislation that would increase compensation for veterans residing on Guam and other geographically challenged areas in the Pacific for costs associated with obtaining treatment that is routinely available to all other U S veterans.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas.
Aye.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Raspecho. Senator Raspecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Resolution number three oh two dash thirty-three received, I didn't write this in, fifteen ye votes. Bill, I mean, resolution number three oh two dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number one ninety dash thirty-three C O R.
Bill number one nine zero dash thirty-three C O R, as substituted by the Committee on Health, Economic Development, Homeland Security, and Senior Citizens, introduced by Dennis G Rodriguez Junior. An act to amend section nine C of public law thirty-two dash fifty-four, relative to requiring that the National Clinical Mental Health Counselor exam be the sole requisite exam for licensure of mental health counselors. To amend sections one, two, nine, and sixteen of public law thirty-two fifty-four, for the purposes of establishing a licensed intern designation during the three thousand hour postgraduate clinical experience period required for mental health professional licensure. And to amend sections fourteen and twenty-one of public law thirty-two dash fifty-four to provide for an eighteen month limitation on the grandfather provision.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas.
Aye.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Raspecho.
Yes.
Senator Raspecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number one ninety dash thirty-three, we see fifteen yea votes. Bill number nine, one ninety dash thirty-three is duly passed by this law, by this body. Senator Tom Ada, I want to make sure that you're okay with two seventy-six sponsorship because I know you got up earlier, but I don't think it was a motion, I'm not sure. That was two-five-two? That, that you're okay with that, it's, oh, two-five-two, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so we're good. Thank you, Senator. So bill number two seventy-six dash thirty-three C O R.
Bill number two seven-six dash thirty-three C O R, as substituted and amended on the floor, introduced by T. R. Munia Barnes, T. C. Ada, Judith T. Wampat, E. D. D. An act to add a new section seven-five-one-two-five to chapter seventy-five of title twenty-one, Guam Code annotated, relative to designating a portion of lot five-one-three-three dash one dash two, municipality of Timuning, consisting of one zero-two-four square meters, as a biodiversity conservation easement for the purpose of providing an area for the promotion of biodiversity.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispecho. Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number two seventy-six dash thirty-three, receive fifteen yea votes. Bill number two seventy-six dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Resolution number three-three-nine dash three thirty-three.
Resolution three-three-nine dash thirty-three C O R, as amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., R. J. Rispecho, V. Anthony Ada, Tommy Morrison, M. B. Underwood, Ph.D., T. R. Munia Barnes, Brand T. McCready, Frank F. Blas Jr. Relative to amending Iminai Trentitress Nalesla Turanguahan Otin Areklamentu, the thirty-third Guam Legislature Standing Rules to ensure the timely public hearing of all bills by all sponsors so that the people of Guam's voices can be heard.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispecho. Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
No.
Speaker Wampat, nay. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, nay.
Resolution number three-three-nine dash thirty-three, receive eleven yea votes and four nay votes. Resolution number three-three-nine dash thirty-three is duly passed. Bill number two fifty-two dash thirty-three C O R.
Bill number two-five-two dash thirty-three C O R, as substituted on the floor and amended in the Committee of the Whole, introduced by T. R. Munia Barnes, Judith T. Wampat, E. D. An act relative to appropriating the sum of two million three hundred thousand dollars to the Guam Visitors Bureau for safety-related capital improvement projects in Tumon and the hosting of the Festival of Pacific Arts and the sum of one million three hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars to the Guam Police Department, the Department of Public Works, and the Guam Fire Department for the security measures for the Festival of Pacific Arts.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, pass. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispecho. Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, nay. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill number two fifty-two dash thirty-three, receive thirteen yea votes and two nay votes. Bill number two fifty-two dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number two thirty-two dash thirty-three L S.
Bill number two-three-two dash thirty-three L S, as amended by the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and Youth Development, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Brand T. McCready, James V. Espaldon, V. Anthony Ada, Frank F. Blas Jr., Tommy Morrison, Mary Camacho Torres, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr. An act to amend section seven-four-one-zero-eight of chapter seventy-four, title eleven, Guam Code annotated, relative to increasing the civil penalties for scrap metal businesses who fail to properly follow reporting requirements as per Guam law, and to amend subsection A and add a new subsection B to section seven-seven-one-three-four, Article One, Chapter Seventy-seven, Title Ten, Guam Code annotated, relative to the deposit of any fines imposed on scrap metal businesses in the Police Services Fund and the Copper Victims Fund.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispecho. Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Just a point of information, Madam Speaker. The title does not reflect the provision contained in section four. So it references section seventy-four-one-zero-eight as well as chapter seventy-seven, but it doesn't reflect seventy-four-one-one-zero, so the title can also reflect that, please, Madam Speaker, thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator, I think the clerk and legal counsel have taken note. Yeah, section seven-four-one-oh-eight. Got it, okay. Got it? No, no, it's okay, she can do it. Okay, so on the votes for two thirty-two dash thirty-three, received and fifteen yea votes, a bill number two thirty-two dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number two dash thirty-three L S. Two dash thirty-three. L S.
Bill number two dash thirty-three L S, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication and amended in the Committee of the Whole and further amended on the floor, introduced by B. J. F. Cruz, Michael F. Q. Siniklis. An act to add a new Article Five to chapter eight, title four, Guam Code annotated, relative to creating a new defined benefit one-point-seven-five requirement system, retirement system, and to creating a new cash balance plan, Guam Retirement Security Plan, as alternatives to the defined contribution retirement system upon timely election in accordance with regulations to be promulgated to amend subsections eight-two-zero-eight and eight-two-zero-nine-A of Article Two, Chapter Eight, Title Four, Guam Code annotated, relative to increasing the defined contribution retirement system, member and employer contributions to six and two-tenths percent, and to amend section eight-one-three-seven-B, Article One, Chapter Eight, Title Four, Guam Code annotated, relative to extending the amortization period of the unfunded liability for prior service.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispecho. Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, pass. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number two dash thirty-three L S, receive fifteen yea votes. Bill number two dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. On the nomination of Thomas E. B. Borja to serve as a member of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority Board of Commissioners, all in favor, please raise your hand. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Thomas E. B. Borja received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Camya L. G. Dearking to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Equalization, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Dearking received unanimous support and she's duly confirmed by this board. On the nomination of Eloy S. Lizama to serve as a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Lizama received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Odessa M. Martinez to serve as a real estate broker member of the Real Estate Commission, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Martinez received unanimous support and she's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Christopher S. Murphy to serve as a real estate broker member of the Real Estate Commission, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Murphy received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Lilian Paris Posadas to serve as a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Paris Posadas received unanimous support and she's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Melissa Y. Y. Bo to serve as a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board to serve as a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Weibo received unanimous support and she's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Christine W. Belletto to serve as the Director of the Department of Administration, roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, pass. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, I. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, I. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, I. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, I. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, I. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, I. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, I. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, I. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, I. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, I. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, I. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, pass. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, I. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, I. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, nay.
On the nomination of Christine W. Belletto to serve as the Director of the Department of Administration, she received 14 ye votes and one nay. Ms. Christine Belletto is duly confirmed by this body. Senator Rispisho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions.
On that motion, objections ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you also for not calling the vote on Bill 268-33 because the author of the bill, after legal review, has another version to move and it will be substituted by the author. So I move that the bill be taken out of the voting file and placed at the top of the second reading file.
On that motion, objections ordered.
Then I also move that we proceed to the second reading file.
Okay, we're in the second reading. Senator Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, and after review of legal counsel, we just made an amendment onto Page 3, Section 3 on the rental stipulations. Legal counsel had just recommended that we strike out the from pursuant to 2 GCA 2107 Fair Market Value shall be determined by the average of two appraisals dated December 2015, submitted by Cornerstone Valuations Guam Inc. and Captain Associates. Strike that section out and just insert it, notwithstanding any provisions of the lease.
Okay, is the clerk able to get that? I know legal counsel has that. Read it one more time, please.
On Section 3, Page 3, rental stipulations, we'll be striking out pursuant to 2 GCA, Section 2107 Fair Market Value shall be determined by the average of the two appraisals dated December 2015, submitted by Cornerstone Valuation Guam Inc. and Captain and Associates, and insert it, notwithstanding any provisions of the lease. So that we just, it's, it's, um... The rent has already been set in statute. So we're just going by what the rent is already that we're setting in statute versus the lease appraisals.
So legal counsel has acknowledged that then as well. So please make sure that... Well, we're gonna have to take a brief recess to make sure that everyone gets their copy, okay? So we're in recess. Senators, you should all have an engrossed copy of Bill 268-33. Senator Rispisho can get a motion, though, before we vote on this because we had just made the amendment. Okay, but you're getting an engrossed copy. But just make the motion to send it down. So, yes, Senator then?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We can motion to move 268-33 to the voting file.
Thank you, Senators. On that, as amended, you're right, yes. And further substituted on the floor. Thank you, Senator. Okay, so no objections ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Then I move that we proceed to the voting file, notwithstanding the House rules.
Thank you. So everyone should now get a copy of the engrossed bill earlier. You had the amended version. So on Bill Number 268-33 LS, can clerks please read the title?
Bill Number 268-33 LS is substituted by the author and further substituted on the floor. Introduced by V. Anthony Ada. An Act to Authorize a Commercial Lease Between the Department of Land Management and the Dedito Paylas Supermarket for Use of a Portion of the Dedito Buffer Strip as specified by Section 68901 of Article 9, Chapter 68, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, I. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, I. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, I. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, I. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, I. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, I. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, I. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, I. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, I. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, I. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, I. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, I. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, I. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, I.
On Bill Number 268-33, which was substituted by the author and further substituted on the floor, received 15 ye votes. So Bill Number 268-33 is duly passed by this body. We've exhausted all of the bills and nominations on the agenda. So therefore, we are now brief extension of remarks. Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, thank you very much for allowing me to give very brief extension of remarks. Before I give my extension, I'd like to ask this body for a moment of silence in the memory of the late Speaker Ben Pangolinan and the late Vice Speaker Tony Blas. Thank you very much, colleagues. Madam Speaker, though I and Senator Siniklis appear as the main sponsors of this piece of legislation, I think due recognition and honor should be given to the memory of these two men that I asked for the moment of silence on. In 2008, after we were told by the OPA that 8,000 of our fellow GovGuam employees were in trouble, I threw up my hands in impotent exasperation. Thankfully, Senator Ben Pangolinan did not. He devoted the next six years to working on trying to find a resolution to this issue. Up until his last month, he was reviewing the 12th, 12th iteration of what was being called the Hybrid Bill, which was introduced after his untimely passing during the 32nd Guam Legislature. I was honored to take up the banner at that point to move it forward for him. But he had worked with 12 different iterations over a six-year period with the retirement fund to get them to have a bill that they realized was going to be able to provide a floor for a dignified retirement for 8,000 employees and to provide for their spouses upon their untimely death. Senator Tony Blas also realized the need to address this. He, though he was serving as Director of BBMR and then Deputy Administration and back to BBMR and then back to Administration, got himself elected to be the DC, the Defined Contribution Representative on the GovGuam Retirement Board. And he, along with that board, which I also want to thank for their decade-long efforts at trying to work this through, every single one of those board members, Mr. Cruz, Jerry Cruz, and Lena Leon-Garot, Sancho Leon-Garot, amazing. And the rest of the board. And the rest of the board, they'd worked over a decade with Senator Blas and Speaker Ben. I only caught it because Speaker Ben was no longer here. And I want to thank all of you for assisting me move this through the legislature. We didn't ramrod it through, Madam Speaker. It was introduced in the summer of 2014. When we didn't have time in the 32nd Guam Legislature, it wasn't pushed. It was the second bill introduced, though I keep insisting that it really should have been number one, but you got number one, I got number two. It was the second bill introduced that day. And again, did not get ramrod it through this legislature. You and all of my colleagues spent over thirteen, fourteen months in eleven different roundtables, public hearings and roundtables, to discuss this bill. Towards the end of his life, though I'm sure he didn't realize it, Senator Tony Blas sent out an email to all the HR representatives, I mean, HR personnel throughout the government, asking them to come down here last November to indicate and show their support for Bill 2 because he believed it was an excellent bill. Unfortunately, he too passed. But he believed in this bill. He worked on this with Senator Ben and the rest of that retirement fund. The bill that they sent down is intact in the Bill 2 that we passed today. We did, however, add a very major amendment to the bill, and I want to thank Senator Mike Siniklis for crafting the Guam Retirement Security Act provision. Because he, like the administration and many on this island, believed that we shouldn't be in the retirement system. And in the hopes of eventually moving towards the Social Security system that nationally established, wanted to have, put an end to having people on the defined benefit plans and to eventually move us all off, all the new employees into a social security system. So I want to acknowledge Senator Mike Siniklis for all of his hard work and insistence. Really, seriously. Because there were times that I didn't appreciate the objections, but it did become a much better bill. We increased the GovGuam retirees' contribution to 6.2 so that when and if the Social Security plan is adopted here on Guam, it'll be easily administrated, moved over. So Madam Speaker, many people have worked many, many, many years to get this through. And I really want to thank all of you, all of you here in this legislature, for taking the time to meet with me and my staff, to walk through the bill, answer any questions that you might have had. But most importantly, I want to thank all of you for recognizing our responsibility to try to make sure that eight thousand two hundred of our GovGuam employees are able to retire in dignity. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And please, let's continue to remember Senator Ben Pangolinen and Senator Tony Blas for all of their efforts in getting this bill, Bill 2, to the floor. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. If anybody would like to take the opportunity. There being none, Senator Respecho, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we adjourn subject to the call of the Speaker.
On that motion, we are adjourned subject to the call of the Speaker.